Mark Carmen of VIB TV. We're here today with Robert McConnell. Robert is a Vallejo lawyer and he is running for Vallejo City Council. So, Robert, we've sat down a number of times over the course of Vallejo's bankruptcy and discussed some of the issues, legal issues, and so on. So you and I are no strangers. And now you're running for city council. So, first of all, why don't you tell me why you're running for city council?
Well, I saw what I perceived as a need for a different type of thinking in the city. One that will shift from the past, where it starts to become more involved with the things that need to be done to make our government better and, of course, to be able to attract business to the city that hasn't been done before, to get away from the old boys', if you will, network, the same way of thinking. I think we need to go into the next realm of advancement. And I don't see that happening with whom we've had on the council as the majorities in the past. And unless we get the right majority on the council this time, I don't see it happening again. So I felt that there was a strong need. Probably the one issue that decided, motivated me to run more than anything else, was when, during the repayment structuring of the bankruptcy, when we were trying to determine how we were going to adjust our debts. Our city council voted a 6.29% increase for our police officers for one year, which has already kicked in, plus another increase up to 6.29% that started on July 1st of this year, in an amount yet to be determined pursuant to a wage survey. And, of course, I've taken hundreds, if not thousands, of businesses and individuals through repayment bankruptcies. And I lecture, I preach, I harp about how you control your expenses, how you don't start spending more money just because life seems like it's getting a little better. You've got to stay the course. And I saw that as a real failure on the part of our leadership. I saw that it didn't have any vision, that it didn't have comprehension of the difficulty of the problem that we're truly facing and actually will continue to face until our economy really does turn around, which is not going to happen, I believe, for at least three to five years.
So we have, we've got some critical times coming up, that the new council is going to decide on, one being the contracts of 2012.
Yes, very much so. And who the voters select this year is very much the major consideration of what they will do with a city manager. Because those seven people, whomever they are, are the ones who will make that decision to hire the city manager. And we need to have a city manager that this time is going to be here for 10, 15, 20 years.
We certainly have gone through a lot of them in the past few years, that's for sure.
Too many, and for too many bad reasons. That type of thinking also needs to change. So I see the need for a real change in mindset on our city council and even by those of us who live here in town. And I felt I could bring that change to the council and that it was time to either put up or shut up. So I decided to put my hat in the ring, so to speak.
Put your name up there and go for it.
See what happens. You never know.
So what, tell me a little bit about how you came to Vallejo. Give me a little bit of your background.
Well, I'm a multi-generation Californian. One of my great-grandfathers actually helped write the California Constitution of 1850 that helped to keep this state free at that time. I've grown up in the public education system. My parents or family are graduates of U.C. I believe in public education very, very strongly. I attended San Jose State, also Sierra College. I got my bachelor's degree in public administration. Then I started working in graduate work in public administration as well. I had finished all my master's thesis, all my master's courses, when the Army decided they needed me more. And so I had had my topic approved to write my master's thesis when it became time to go to war. So oddly enough, that thesis-
You went to Vietnam.
I was a combat rifleman in Vietnam. I'm the guy with the M-16 that slapped through the rice paddies of the Mekong Delta. Yes, I did it all. And I did what infantry people do. And, of course, that was a substantial impact upon how I looked at things before I was ready to go to work in government in some phase. And after that, I kind of was soured on the whole process, I have to admit. And it did take me many years to get past that point. It's been a long healing process. But I think that, given my background, given my education, given my experiences, given my temperament, I can bring something to the city council that hasn't been there for a long time, and that's insight, that's understanding about how a city manager system really does work. It's the skills of the legal training as well as the budgetary training, because public administration is the business end of government. We study things like budgeting, personnel, staffing, all those nice, technical, boring things that really make the wheels of government work. And I think that when you have a better understanding of that, it brings something to the city council level that has not been there in the past.
So you understand the mechanics of government, the bureaucracy, and you have some experience navigating that.
The business, the politics as well. While I was in law school, I was on the Law Review, and I had to cover Willie Brown, who was the chair of the Ways and Means Committee in the Assembly. I dealt with the lobbyists. I worked at the State Personnel Board, where I had to get money out of Governor Reagan's super cabinet at the time, when none existed, in order to recruit people into the state government. I did budgets while I was a government intern at the Personnel Board, before I became the head of the organization. I did nothing but run wages, standards, and compensation standard surveys so the state could pay prevailing wages. So all day long, we found out what highway patrolmen were paid compared to police officers in Fresno, compared to sheriff officers in Chatham County.
Now, you're going to be facing, potentially, that issue in 2012 with employee contracts coming up. What do you think needs to be done to keep Vallejo from basically going over the edge again, in that regard at least?
A lot. We're not going to be potentially facing it. We're going to have to take it on full force. They can't kick the can down the road for another two years as they did in the past. And whom the voters select as the city council members are the ones who are going to make that decision. So the voters this time are casting the die as to who will negotiate those contracts, what's going to go into them, and also who the city manager is going to be. What needs to be done is we have to be more financially prudent than we have ever, ever been before in our past. And that means understanding where our tax money comes from, what it's spent on, whether it's a general fund compared to the water fund, compared to the reserve funds. I mean, we have over 100 bank accounts, if you will, checking accounts in our municipal government. And it's only the one checking account, the general fund, that went into Chapter 9. That's what people, I think, are not fully aware of.
Which is essentially in the bit that the council has real discretionary influence over to a-
That's it.
-great extent.
But to the extent they tie up obligations to spend that discretionary money for employee salaries, for potholes, for arts centers, then you're tying your hands in the hands of future councils as to what you do. And one thing you don't do is give five- and 10-year contracts to employees. You don't do that in private business. I don't do that in my business. And you can't do it in government. That has to stop. That has to change also. We are going to have to be honest enough to sit down with our employees. They have a major stake in this game, as do the taxpayers and the people who work at City Hall and the people who will sit on that dais. And that means honest, open, non-personal dialogue. One of the real shortcomings in the Chapter 9 was this personal antagonism that arose. And that has to be avoided, I think, at all costs. And one of the things that, being an attorney for 40 years, have taught me is to listen very carefully and also to analyze the issues and the arguments, to not get into the idea of who says it and why they say it and where they're coming from. What, somebody in Washington once said, you know, "The best thing I ever learned as a politician in this town was never attack their motivation, only their judgment."
Right. So we need some cultural change or some cultural progress in terms of the relations in city government. But ultimately, it's about the money. And a lot of people are focusing on Measure B.
Yes, indeed.
Which is going to increase the sales tax by 1%. It's going to give us, they estimate, somewhere around nine and a half, maybe a little more, maybe a little less, million dollars-
Per year.
-per year, which is a pretty sizable pile of money.
Good chunk.
Yeah. So where do you stand on Measure B and also in terms of where to spend what money we have, how to spend it, and so on?
First off, I'm voting no on Measure B.
Okay.
And I'm doing that because I don't think this government has addressed the necessary structural changes on how they operate as a business entity. If you put $9.8 million onto the table every year, then obviously, a lot of people are going to come forward and make demands upon that $9.8 million, especially employees. We already pay high, high compensation standards. And that doesn't mean just wages. It also takes into pension plans, contributions for union off-time, you name it. It's a wide specter of what goes into, how gets paid. And if we throw $9.8 million on the table, I don't think we'll ever address the need to reshape how we conduct business at the government level. So I'm against it as that. I'm also against it because I believe that we are slipping more and more into poverty in this nation. We have gone from 15.2% up to 15.9% poverty level. That was in 2010. It's going up. In 1980, our sales tax in this state was 4%. And I can remember when it was 3%. So we've gone from 3% to 6.5% now, and we're pushing it higher and higher. And all we do is put it on the backs of the middle class. We've got to get government off the backs of the middle class. We have to take that mentality away that is nothing more than a golden goose.
So in other words, in essence, what you're saying is that the bad decisions are going to be paid for on the backs of the taxpayers?
They will continue to be paid on the backs of the taxpayers. Even if we stopped contributing a red cent to anybody for future retirement plans right this minute, and we wanted to come clean and settle up our debts, you and I would each have to write a check for $1,750 for every individual in this city to pay that debt that we already have to pay. And when we keep continuing to pay for-
You're talking about the unfunded liabilities and obligation for retirees?
Yes, which goes into compensation standards as well. It's not just wages. And that's what we need to think about. Also, if we really had the guts, we would put onto the ballot a tax measure that said, "Vote for what you want to spend your money on." Participatory budgeting is what we call it in government. And that's where you say, "Okay, I want a quarter percent to go to police, I want a quarter percent to go to fire, I want a quarter percent to go to road repair, I want a quarter percent to go to education, I want a quarter percent to go to entertainment," you name it. But, of course, we don't do that. What we have instead is a council who says, "Well, we're afraid we can't get the 75% vote, so we're going for the 50% level."
It's a special tax.
That's a special tax.
Now, it just seems weird to me. I don't know what your thought is, but it seems like a general tax requires just a simple majority, right?
Correct.
And a special tax is, what is it, 2/3 or 75%?
It's 2/3.
2/3, okay. So that requires 2/3. And a special tax being where you designate how the money is spent. It seems to me like it doesn't make sense. It should be the other way around.
I agree with you on that, but that's what the state law is. And if this pass, this does pass, then the real challenge for a council is to decide what to do with it. And everybody's saying, "Oh, I'm going to fund police, I'm going to fund fire, I'm going to do better parks," you name it. Well, I think what we have to do is go a little bit further and get some citizen involvement, show some leadership here. Put together a Citizens Advisory Committee so we don't get the special interest lobbying the individual members that they've helped elect to the council. Instead, we get the community involved. And this is one of the things that we advocated on the Charter Review Committee. I was on the Finance Subcommittee for that one. And other cities do it. They have what's called participatory budgeting. It's where they actually go out into the community before the budget cycle gets into its final stages, and they survey them. How much do you want to spend on police? If you have $100, how much do you want to give to a policeman? How much do you want to give to a fireman? How much do you want to give to the parks? What are you going to do with your money?
I don't think some employee groups would like that very much.
Well, they may not, but the reality is, is we are a democracy, and just like in combat, not everybody works on the government front line. Most of them work in private industry, as I do, as you do. And we're the ones who have to pay the bills. And I think that mentality needs to change a little bit more. We've swung so far away from where we were as a country originally, to now we elect a legislative body, and we say, "See you later in four years. In the meantime, do the job, and we'll check in on you four years later and see how you've done, and how we think you've done, and what kind of rhetoric you're going to have."
A certain level of apathy, basically, or exhaustion, maybe, on the part of the voters and the electorate.
And we've done that more in the last 20 years than we've ever done before. And that's not really the way our country was set up or designed. It was designed on the idea that we would have legislators who would come back to their district and associate with their people. The people would be studying these issues, they would be an educated populace, and they would tell these legislators what they thought. And we've gotten away from that. And I think we have to actually get back to it more than we've ever done before, which means having neighborhood associations, where you have somebody like Vallejo Heights, the old downtown association that's become defunct, Glen Cove, Hidden Brook Neighborhood Association. These aren't homeowner associations, these are neighborhood associations. They can't tell you what colored blinds they have. And they get together and they study the issues as they come up before the government entity, and they are advised of them. That's the difference. We have neighborhood associations that get notices from the Planning Division in Chapter 16 of our municipal code, zoning requirements. And when something's going to come up in their neighborhood, they get a notice of it, if there's a neighborhood association. If not, they get the 200-foot notice only. That notice can come out 72 hours. That's over the weekend. You can put a notice on the bulletin board on Friday at 5:00 and have it heard Sunday or Monday night at 7:00, and you've complied with all the law requires of you. That's got to change. We need to shift it back so people can find out about this stuff.
Doesn't give people enough time to react and to give input.
No, it doesn't, but it also requires them to be organized enough to get notice, to study the issues, to have an opinion, and to effectively put their opinions before legislative bodies so that if they don't come down on Monday night, when the council meets and say, "Oh, we've got 15 minutes to present our positions," and you get three minutes as a speaker, and then all of a sudden, you know, there's a vote, and you don't like what happened.
Do you think it's approachable for you as a council member to bring about substantial change in that area?
I do. And I think it has to be done. It can be as minutia as moving the speaker's podium. I sat on that dais for eight years on the Planning Commission. I sat on it on the Charter Review Committee. And if you're in the far chair, all the one to the left of the room, that's a long distance over to that speaker's podium. And I've been in other jurisdictions where that speaker's podium is right in front of the dais. They're down where the staff tables are now, and they've got a podium there. And when they're speaking, those legislators have got to look these people in the right in the eye. And the other thing that does is it opens up the potentiality for dialogue. And, of course, most of our councils are just adverse to dialogue. They just want to hear what you say and next. And I think that really detracts from the government process. I think we've got to get people more involved. We have to structure the way in which they can get involved. Obviously, you can't have council meetings that go from 7 until midnight forever. That's just going to burn everybody.
Been to a few of those.
Yes, you have. And that's not fair to people who have something at the end of the agenda. One of the things I'd like to do is a spin-off on the British House of Commons, where they have the Prime Minister, the head of the entire government, come in, and they get hammered with questions from other people in the House. What we can do in Vallejo is we can have maybe one session a month, or one session every two or three months, where all the-
Like a town hall meeting kind of thing?
More than that.
More of a no-holds-barred town hall meeting?
No-holds-barred, where you've got your department heads there, your city manager there, the city attorney there, and anybody can come in and say, "What about this? What about that?" And they can actually get an answer, because under the Brown Act, state legislation, which I think needs to be addressed also, you're so limited on what you can bring up. I mean, I was constantly being told by the city attorney at Planning Commission that you can't go into that, it's beyond the scope of the Brown Act, it goes beyond our noticing requirement, that's illegal, you can't do it, and if you violate it, you're going to create a misdemeanor, and you're going to be taken off council or off commission. You know, that's one of the penalties for violating the Brown Act. Well, that Brown Act needs to be revisited. It was originally intended to make sure the public business was done in the open. That's a good purpose. But it's become restrictive now. And how many times have you heard somebody at council or any other commission say, "That's beyond the scope of our noticing requirements, it violates the Brown Act." You can't talk about it.
Very frequently.
Frustrating. So, once every two or three months, let's have a no-holds-barred session, where you can come down and ask anything about, you want to, and it doesn't have to be on the Brown Act. Now, maybe the council and the commissions can't make a decision that night. That part's true. But they can at least talk about it.
Right.
And that needs to be something that will go a long ways towards modernizing and getting our citizenry involved again with the government. That's got to happen.
So more openness, more participation in government, more fiscal responsibility.
Absolutely.
What about some of the other things that need to happen? Obviously, economic development is a big consideration in Vallejo. What's your vision for improving that part of the equation?
Okay. You've got to crawl before you can walk, you've got to walk before you can run. And right now, nobody wants to come to Vallejo for the most part. So what we're going to have to do is start real small, like festivals. We bring in a lot of money with some of our festivals, the Pirate Festival, the Birdwatchers. In January, birdwatchers spend more money on their sport than any sport in the entire country.
No kidding?
I know, it's a surprising statistic that I came across.
Who knew? I would have thought maybe skiing or something was expensive.
No, birdwatchers, amazing, isn't it? I know. And then you reach out to small, small businesses. I mean, really small, like less than 10. During a recession is when three out of five businesses are begun. And currently, at least, 60% of new businesses are being started by women. That means you have to make the process friendly to the people who want to start a business idea. We charge a business tax. I pay one for my license every year. First year in business, $10. And what's more, because everybody's so unhappy about our permitting process, if you don't get an answer within 30 days, we'll give you the $10 back. That'll get some new businesses going. We can have something called a business incubator. This is something the city of Concord does. They're going towards the entrepreneurial incubator. What we can do is we have a very dedicated building. We team up with Sonoma State, with Cal Maritime Academy, with Turo. We teach people how to run a business, because people come to me when they're in trouble, and they don't know anything about budgeting, they don't know anything about publicity, they don't know anything about personnel restrictions. And most of them start businesses because they have this idea. They're not trained. So we team them up in a building where there are people who can provide that education, whether they're operating a retail business. It's limited retail, because retail pays sales taxes. And for two or three years, while they're going through this learning process, they get a reduced rent. And at the end of the two to three years, when they've completed the educational process and they find out whether or not they really want to stay in business, then they go out and they occupy our businesses in downtown Vallejo and our malls, and they keep businesses here. Because the desirability of a business as compared to enhanced property values is you get the sales tax, you have property that pays property taxes, with which we get 17 cents on the dollar only to begin with, you have employees who will also be earning money, you get people who start creating ideas, and it grows. Every business starts small. And this is our opportunity to appeal to real, real, small businesses. National businesses will come to Vallejo and leave Vallejo if our demographics don't match. And there are a lot of ideas about what to use Mare Island for, what to use the downtown for.
Well, Mare Island, where we are now, is certainly a place that's looked to as a potential engine of industry perhaps, but development, revenue, and opportunity. So what are your thoughts about Mare Island? What can that look like in the future? Some people are talking about a casino-
Right.
...as an idea.
Well, first off, Mare Island is an area that's split up into three different zones in our planning. And I've sat through and handled all those environmental impact reports and specific plans and everything else, and I've read them. You've got the north end, the south end, and the middle end that we're in right now. A lot of people have advocated for an Indian casino on Mare Island. The problem with an Indian casino is that you cede all control to the Indian casino because they are complete nations. They have autonomy, and that means we can't police them, we can't regulate them. They don't even have to pay sales tax. It does bring employment, yes, it does. And I'm not adverse to a casino per se, because I worked in one once over. I worked for Harris, like Tahoe, right before I left for Vietnam. And in the right location, I think a casino is not necessarily a dead-on arrival idea. But if it's hooked up with an Indian casino, then your only strength is to gain concessions in written form before you sign on the bottom line. Once you've signed on the bottom line, that's it, folks. You don't get to change it later on.
What kind of concessions would you?
Well, for instance, a lot of people are against casinos because of the gambling addiction. And it certainly is a valid addiction. So a condition is they have to fund and operate gambling and anonymous classes. And they don't necessarily, they don't do that at the casino. I've been involved with churches where we had Alcoholics Anonymous in our basements. And, of course, there's a lot of money in that sometimes. So you can-
A lot of money in Alcoholics Anonymous?
There can be.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Because they can have houses that are nonprofit, that are paid for by contributions, the people who are going through these councils sometimes live in them, and their social security checks, because they're on disability, are paid over, and they build up households. There's a lot of way to make money off the nonprofit world as well. But if you're going to have a gambling facility here, you're going to have addicted people. There's no avoiding it.
Right.
And that means you have to have gambling and anonymous classes, you have to have counseling for them. You have to have regulations on lighting, you have to have crime suppression techniques already in place before you sign on that bottom line. You don't get to realize later on, "Oh, we should have asked for this," at the time, and then go back and get it again, because it's too late by then. So, yeah, there's nothing wrong with the idea of-
If it's implemented properly.
Yeah. And that's where the devil is in the details, as they say. Anybody can say, "Oh, I want a gambling casino down here, I want green technology down here." The idea is to carry it out. I mean, one of the things I think the north end should be looked at is the idea of factory shopping, like we have up in Vacaville. Because currently, a recent economic study indicated that more and more Americans are buying at the outlet malls. That's where they prefer to shop nowadays.
You don't think it's oversaturated with the stuff in Napa, just nearby?
Well, there are a lot of new businesses coming online. And if you notice, the nearby factory malls tend to be the same ones. We have the advantage of being very close to Marin County. We also have the advantage of being on Interstate 80. So it's a natural justification for people coming together. And people travel to shop, let's face it. You and I might not be shoppers, but a lot of people are. And the other thing, of course, is I am against Measure B. I think that before we implement Measure B, we need to restructure our government. And if they implement Measure B, it's going to hit most heavily on the backs of the middle class and the lower-middle class. Our sales tax was 4% in 1980. It was 3.5% before that, and 3% when I was a child. Now we're up to 6, and 7, and 9% in different jurisdictions. And even though groceries per se aren't taxed, certain things that are sold within a grocery store are taxed. So you can't say, "We're just going to hit it on our car dealers." Now, if you want to buy a car here-
So you see it, in other words, you're pointing out the regressive nature-
Very nature of the-
...of the sales tax.
Yes, and we have more and more people slipping into poverty. Our median income is much lower here in Vallejo than any other part of this county. And we have a lot of people that are struggling in this city. Now, if you're making $60,000, $70,000, $80,000 a year and you're living in Hidden Brook or one of the nice areas of Glen Cove, maybe that's not going to impact you that much. Yeah, it's not. But for somebody who is struggling on $2,000 a month or less, that's going to start adding up. And when you talk about clothing, you have to pay for it for that, you have to pay for it on repairs for parts on your car. It multiplies throughout the system. And rather than just throwing it on the table where everybody can have a shot at what they want, I say, "Let's be honest enough to make it dedicated to a specific purpose and really ask our taxpayers whether they want to buy into that idea." Let's get some leadership here. If it does pass, if Measure B passes, then let's get a Citizens Advisory Committee. There are already specific plans that are in place for Mare Island, for downtown.
But if you got, of course, it's a general tax. If you got a Citizens Advisory Committee, it would only be because the council deemed to listen to the citizens, not because there was any way of converting it into a special tax. It would still be a general tax. So it would just be, as you say, advisory.
Well, yes, but then the council has to step forward and say, this is what I'm going to use it for. And you can't really, in all honesty, honestly, do that before this election, because some taxpayer organizations will sue to declare the election illegal if that happens. So it's a tight rope. The real challenge is to know what to do if it doesn't pass. And for people who are in favor of it, that's fine. Next question is, what's gonna happen if it doesn't pass? What are you gonna do then? And that's where we're talking about it.
It really does seem, I mean, you hear some people talking about Vallejo has a balanced budget for the next five years. And tell me if you think I'm right or not, but it seems to me that's predicated on, A, the economy not getting worse, and B, the sales tax passing.
And C, property values not continuing to decrease. We've lost almost 70% of our property values in the city of Vallejo, and I track this every day from people coming into my office, I see it. You also have to believe that they are going to continue to have the sales level of businesses conducting retail sales at the same level we have had. When we say we have a balanced budget, it's predicated upon our receiving the same amount of money every year that we have at the moment. And our readjustment of debts is backloaded. We really have to pay out most of those debts in the last 18 months of our economy. And remember, Congress, in its infinite wisdom, a few months ago, said, we're going to cut our programs. We're going to take out, was it $131 billion, or whatever astronomical figure they said? That doesn't happen until October of 2014. That's when that money starts getting taken out of the federal government. The state budget is predicated upon 40% of its money being received from the federal government. So come 2015, when the state budget gets cut, what will they do? They will turn around and they will cut it further from the cities and the counties. And where are we going to have the money then? So we have to think further down the road. We have to live very judiciously on our expenditures for, I think, at least five years, probably longer. Because I don't see this economy coming back. Even the best estimates of unemployment is that it will go down by 1% by 2013.
So a rocky road ahead.
That's what everybody says.
Do you think Vallejo can stay solvent? Do you think we can keep from going into insolvency or, I hope not, bankruptcy again?
I think we can. And Lord knows, we don't want to double dip. I would not want to be that lawyer in front of Judge McManus again. No way. But that means we have to control costs. And I've seen this in the people and the businesses I take through repayment forms of bankruptcies. We get the plan approved, and it feels good now, because things are working right. And then they start growing a little more comfortable, and then start becoming a little more lax. They buy a $200 pair of tennis shoes instead of a $65 pair of tennis shoes. And it's the same idea with organizations. They start bringing back additional expenditures--
In reality--
--a little bit each time.
We probably should be shopping at the dollar store whenever possible.
Well, we have to be judiciously shopping at the dollar store and not buying everything that fills up the bag. And that's the same idea on budgeting. If we doubt, we're gonna have trouble. And it's easier to hold the line than it is to take it back. The same thing on employee contracts. A lot of people are talking about takebacks already. And I can understand the desire to do that, and there may be some need to do that. But I'll tell you, it's a lot harder to take something back than it is to simply hold the line for five years. And so if we pass Measure B, and we get an extra millions or millions of dollars every year, 8.9 million, I think is the projected amount, what are we going to do? Are we going to start raising our salaries? Are we going to start paying more into our retirement plans? Are we going to start paying more into the medical plans? Are we going to start hiring $400,000 city managers, and $200,000 department heads, and $180,000 firefighters, and $150,000 firefighters? I mean, those are tough jobs. I've been in firefights, I've shot at people, and I've been shot back at. I know what that's like, and it's a tough job. But we can have to bring in more people to do that that don't necessarily have to be the ones with the badge and the gun. And that requires a different mindset. You saw that for the first time with the chief the other night. That was a real eye-opener for me. But it has to be done. But it requires political will.
So using non-sworn personnel, for example, in the police department to carry out a lot of tasks?
Yes. And non-sworn doesn't necessarily mean volunteers, although that can be an added advantage. My neighbor's a volunteer now that he's retired, and that can help. My other neighbor used to hand out all the parking tickets all the time in town. He actually made a lot of money for the city when he was doing that. But you have people who are trained in scientific methods more than anything else. When I was a deputy district attorney, when I was a law clerk for the U.S. Court of Appeals, I reviewed thousands and thousands of criminal convictions. And you have to have good police work at the scene, which means people who can collect evidence, people who can collect reports the right way, people who can do accident investigations. You don't have to have somebody who's trained to use a weapon and arrest people, do those activities. They can be done by other people.
So like, non-sworn investigators or something like that?
Exactly, yes.
That we wouldn't have to pay and wouldn't have-- they could be subcontractors, basically, potentially? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, if you wanted to outsource, and that's a whole different area, that requires negotiations with your employee groups. You can't force it down their throat. I wouldn't want to, and that wouldn't be right. But that was an example. When I arrived at my infantry unit in Vietnam, they were out in the field, and they put me to work in the office, because I could type. About a day later, the unit got back, and captain walks in and says, who's the new guy? Blah, 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 he's infantry. He says, tell him you're saddling up, he's going out tomorrow, he's not staying here in the office, somebody else can do that job. So I had a skill, a training, a specific ability to do something. And that's true with the sworn personnel who has a badge and can arrest people. I have a nephew who's a police officer. And he's a corporal, doesn't live in this state, lives in a very high-earning state. He called me up when all this hit the news. He said, are you guys crazy out there? You guys pay your corporals more than we pay our highest-ranking officer in this whole state. Are you crazy?
Yeah, well, we do have some of the highest-paid, both police and fire, I think almost anywhere, really, in Vallejo.
Yes, and to change that requires political will. And that requires free-thinking people who are going to be honest enough with the numbers and not motivate towards somebody who gets them into office or to whom they think they owe their loyalty. And I definitely am an independent person. I have been.
And in terms of the influence of special interests, who are your backers and endorsements, things like that, Robert?
Individuals at the moment. I have been endorsed by the Democratic Central Committee and the South Democratic Club. Other than that, nobody. And all of my fundraisers, and I've been doing a lot of them, have been by individuals. I've had a few $500 donations. Most of them are in the 10, 20, $50 range. That's who believes in me. And I think they believe in me because they have come to know me and how I think, and the work I did on the planning commission, the work I did on the charter review, the ability to articulate things. We're getting some good results at the forums that we have, but most people don't see these forums, they can't come. And as people come to really look at what is needed on a city council, the attributes that I can bring to the table, and my skills, and my background, and my experiences, and my knowledge, I think are something that are sorely needed on any city council, but especially in Vallejo at this time.
Right. Now, let's just bounce back to another item that's gonna be on the ballot, which is Measure C, medical marijuana.
Right.
That's an issue, because we've got over 20 medical marijuana dispensaries in Vallejo at this point. It's a bit of a green rush.
And counting.
And counting.
Yeah.
So what are your thoughts about Measure C? Do you favor it? And your thoughts about medical marijuana dispensaries going forward? And also, the conflict between the federal and state regulations on that?
Again, that's an awful lot. And where I have a skill that most people don't is that in the federal bankruptcy laws, which are practiced in the federal court, it's a national level, it also takes into consideration what goes on in the state courts. So this is why you saw the question of can we void out these employee contracts? That was an interplay between federal and state law. And we get this in bankruptcy all the time. The same thing on the medical marijuana problem. We have federal law that says it's a Class I drug, you can't have it at all. We have a state initiative that says you can use it for medical purposes. But all you need is a recommendation of a doctor, it's not even a prescription, it's not even a, you really need this thing. And that needs to be addressed at the state level. That's one thing. We've got to go to our state legislators, I think, and modernize or tweak that law to start with. I'm going to vote yes on Measure C. I'm gonna tax them. They're here. We're not gonna be able to throw them out on the street, they're already here. And yes, they should be paying taxes, and they should be paying high taxes.
Do you think there should be a moratorium?
I do, because otherwise, we'll just have more people move in. And you can say, oh, they're illegal, all you want, it's not stopping them from coming in. And of course, there is the question of whether or not they have a business license. A business license is simply a revenue-producing process for the city. It doesn't mean you're a proper business, it means you gotta pay money. That's all it does. That's all it does. You also have to have an ability to conduct business in the area. And what we're trying to say is, oh, you violate our zoning laws. Our problem is, our zoning laws are outdated. They need to be updated with the general plan. And they don't say you can or you cannot have a medical marijuana dispensary. So people come in and they open up, and they use the pretext of, say, selling cookies or dolls or whatever else it is that they use, and they open up. So we are going to have to have a moratorium for a while. The city of San Jose recently addressed this issue at their first reading of their ordinance. They decided to have 10 dispensaries, I think, in the city, and charged them $10,000 apiece for their licensing fee. My idea is, the city is pretty amenable in Vallejo to four zones, north, south, east, west. And we maybe have one dispensary in each zone. And we have a selection process by which the best and most qualified medical dispensary would qualify for that. Because a lot of them, let's face it, are nothing more than pretexters. And then they regulate, and they pay, and they pay, and they pay, because we can justify a fee, as long as it's not a tax. Where it stays as a fee is if you're paying for services that are rendered on behalf of that particular industry. That means auditing, that means zoning, that means policing, that means narcotics rehabilitation. I think you're gonna have to demand that they offer a narcotics anonymous classes, not at their facility. And they can charge for that. But the dispensary should pay for it, not offer it. They have to provide it through an outside nonprofit, whether it's a church or an established nonprofit organization. It can and should be done, because you've got to address the need. I saw medics in Vietnam carry marijuana for Viet Cong. And it was very effective as a pain suppressant. They didn't have a lot of drugs. But what they did use it for was very effective. I also, unfortunately, one night, saw a truck driver who had never been in combat or in a firefight in his life, get some grass and get stoned. He pulled the pin, and then he released the handle before we could get to him. So it can be a destructive drug as well.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. And of course, it does bring out a lot of depression.
No hand grenades at the marijuana dispensaries.
Nor anywhere else.
No.
So it's something that is not going to go away. We are going to have to address it in a responsible, intelligent manner. It can be something, a lot of money is made off of it, because it can serve as a revenue-generating process. It won't be as much as the general tax measure, that's true. But it can also serve as a dedicated source of funding for something like the police department. Because they're the ones that are so worried we're gonna have all this crime. But it can be used as a dedicated source of funding if we need to. And that's something we have to be open-minded about and not shut down just because it's--
That's an interesting scenario, because then the police would be encouraging people to smoke up.
No, they wouldn't be encouraging them to smoke up.
I'm joking. I'm just making a little joke, Robert.
And in all honesty, there are probably some to do.
But on a more serious note, as we're getting close to the end of our time, what do you see as your vision for Vallejo going forward? And what are the most important issues that need to be addressed in the upcoming council?
Well, as I said, there are four areas that I want to see developed. One, of course, is in business enhancement. And that's where we have the small businesses, the festivals, the more user-friendly attitude on the part of City Hall. And I can cite you example after example of people who've had difficulties. But we work more closely with the school administration. We have a wonderful new superintendent who's from the same school that I did.
We haven't touched on that, so tell me a little bit, as far as what you see your role would be if you were on city council relating to the schools.
Well, I started talking about this in January, and I'm very pleased to see a lot of other people picking it up finally. And what I believe is there has to be more cooperation and more openness between the two government bodies. In some cities, back east in particular, the city council and the school board are one and the same. So when they come to California, they're surprised to find out that city councils don't have that much authority over it. But one of the things we can do is start having a full-time liaison officer. When I was on planning commission, we had a full-time liaison person. And they were there, or they were supposed to be there, and they advised us, kept us in contact with the city council. We don't have that with the education. We have an intergovernmental agency that fortunately is supposed to meet once every quarter and often doesn't have very good attendance. So let's have a designated liaison officer from a city council to the Public Department of Education, the school board, and the superintendent of instruction. Let's start working closer together. When they closed Springs Town, they wanted to have a march from there down to where Vallejo Junior High was. So they went to the police department to get a permit, parade permit, and the police department said $1,500, please, just to walk, so they could shut down the intersections which could be done by volunteer people as well. And that type of mentality has to change. But that means reception, a reception on the part of city council. I had school board members, teachers, students tell me all the problems with city council not being receptive to, the government being resistant to, the education. Let's face it, our property values are driven by educational systems. You want to improve your property values, improve the Department of Education in our city, start working with it. Bring in advisors. The superintendent we have comes from University of Pacific, which has some of the most innovative and creative thinking techniques and teaching techniques of any educational system in the entire country. They're very creative, and she's illustrating that already. And that's what McGeorge at the law school does, that's what they do in the educational department in Stockton. They think outside the box. And I think you're seeing the benefits of that already. So we need to keep that momentum going. It's critical that people on city council be very education-friendly. Otherwise, we won't improve our school systems. Believe me, we won't. We also, I think, in the terms of education, can start becoming monitors. I've touched on the need and the desire to have neighborhood associations, which is where they can band together and advise the government itself. Well, they can also adopt the local school in that area. Right now, you have to go through the PTA to be involved. You can't just walk into-- the principals often say, blah, 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 you get thrown out usually. By having a neighborhood association there, there's somebody who's recognized that the school can meet with and the neighborhood can meet with when they have a problem at a local school. Whether it's people at the high school campus spinning donuts in your intersection, or breaking your windows somewhere, graffitiizing your fence, which, you know, I live near a school, I get it every once in a while, we just paint it over again. But there's no dialogue right now by having neighborhood associations talk with education. And we can open up that dialogue. We have to have more citizenry involvement in this whole town. Otherwise, we won't make it. We can't just say, city council, you figure out who you're gonna vote, and we got four people, I'm happy, goodbye. That can't keep going anymore.
More involvement, more communication.
That's a big thing. Yeah, absolutely.
And I guess what I ask at this point, Robert, is there anything that you think of, a question you wish I had asked that I haven't, that comes to your mind?
Well, I think the experience, background. And I feel like I've been oriented towards this position for a long time. As I said, I started out in it. I've lobbied in Washington on behalf of consumers. I'm used to legislators. I speak bureaucrat, I speak legalese, I speak bankruptcy, I speak common English still. And more than anything else, I listen. I do have ringing in my ears from small arms fire, and that means that I have to listen better than most people. I have to really concentrate on it. And by having that defect, it's actually enhanced my ability to listen to people very carefully in a controlled environment. Now, I'm no good in a party room, which is why people think I'm boring and not much fun and a great social person, because I can't really hear them sometimes in a cocktail party. But in the refined air of a council chamber, or a legislative session, or the courtroom, where sound is really well-controlled, I have learned techniques to listen very carefully. And I've learned how to concentrate on what is being said, rather than who says it or whom they say it on behalf of. So that's one of the real attributes I think I can bring to it. Plus, I've been trained as a mediator, arbitrator, I'm a litigator, I've probably done everything that you can conceivably think of, where government and the interrelationship of government with citizenry is involved. I understand the mechanics of government, this is a job I can do, I know. And for too many years, I've sat out in the audience like the rest of us have, and listened to people talk about how they're going to bring us the sun, the moon, the stars above. And I realized it's now time for me to step up to the plate and put myself where my mouth is.
Would you like to give a final word to the voters, Robert?
Okay. Well, I am running on November eighth. This is the first time I've ever run for anything. I believe that with my attributes, I can bring to the table things that aren't there. We are going to have to negotiate the employee contracts, and I've negotiated contracts in the past, I've hired and I've fired people. I've worked with the Personnel Board, knowing how to budget, how to pay people. And I've been involved, I've fought fires with the U.S. War Service, I've been in firefights with the United States Army. I understand those jobs. I've worked with Public Works, spent a year with them, actually, when my mother went to Alaska. So, I understand how Public Works work as well. I can bring all this experience to the table, but only if I'm elected. There are three positions open on the city council, plus the mayor. And I am asking that you at least consider me and vote for me for one of those city council positions, because I think we can make this a much better city than it's ever